These other chickens, they're very, very, they come out into our yards. They perch on the fences. They come across our land. I want to just tell them, see what regulations we can possibly do. I have a dagger, because this is the most several times they've been wanting to marry one anymore. The whole thing about the dog is by the line.
When I went through the, um, the town code, there are some sections in there. I know we're a farming community, but this is not a farming community issue. This is a public safety and health issue. Um, we have a special needs trial that we were told not to let go outside because of these rats. Um, the most recent one I sent to the town, it happened at three thirty in the afternoon. And the rat was crossed our driveway and got hit in the middle of Vernon Street at three thirty in the afternoon. So I'd like to, um, discuss with you Article two, section two about wildlife. Wildlife shall mean any undomesticated and unrestrained animal. Well, a rat is not a domesticated animal. It's talking about feeding them shall mean that act of ground feeding, placing, exposing, distributing, or scattering directly food. These animals are getting the chickens food, which is why we're getting them. I have reports. That shows that they have traced all the tunnels to this particular house. Um, section G talks about making food inaccessible to wildlife. These people have not done that. They won't even answer the door. We also have section two, um, paragraph C two, control of pests. They're not controlling the pests because they're the ones causing the rats. So we have come to the town now for several months since March and our whole neighborhood is being affected. I know Eric, we've talked to you several times. This problem has to be resolved. We can't even go out in our yards because of these rats. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak?
Hi, I'm Gretchen DeLudis. I live at four thirty six Vernon Street. I'll cross the street from Heidi and it's my pool that's getting rats. I pulled one out of my skimmer this big, tail just as long. I've lived there twenty, almost twenty-one years, never had a rat ever. So just.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak?
Good evening, council. Ed Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. I'm here tonight to comment on agenda item number L A Town Manager Contract Amendment. First, I want to preface my remarks by saying that I have the utmost respect for our town manager. So my comments are not a reflection on him personally, but rather centered on process. In this body's obligation to the citizens of Bridgewater to follow proper process. From what has been said from the last meeting, it appears that the basis for this particular order stems from a salary study that was conducted for town managers. That was presented to you weeks ago in executive session. While the salary study may certainly provide valuable data in determining employee compensation, it should not be the only factor. As is generally accepted across all businesses and industries, the basis for any salary increase and or position extension. Needs to include individual performance and future potential. In order to measure performance and potential, regular reviews need to occur with the employee. To discuss measurable, measurable objectives in the capacity to succeed in the future. Section four dash nine of our town charter says the following. Annually, the council president shall cause the town council to prepare and deliver to the town manager. A written evaluation of the town manager's performance. The evaluation shall be conducted in accordance with any applicable general or law or special law. In addition, Article two, section twenty-one dash I of the administrative code states the following. Annual evaluation. In accordance with provisions of mass general law in terms of the most recent town manager contract. Each calendar year beginning in October, the review committee shall begin the town manager's evaluation process. Following a five step process. My understanding, and I hope someone can correct me if I'm wrong. Is that the town manager has not had a formal performance review in at least two years and possibly longer. If this is true, then the town council has actually violated the charter and the administrative code. And ultimately let down the citizens of Bridgewater. Accountability for this lies mainly with the council president, since the council president is the one that initiates this. In this case, that would have been councillor Chase most recently and councillor Rushton before that. So this is my question to you, how can you decide whether to adjust an employee's salary? In term of employment solely based on a salary study and not consider anything else. Ultimately, it's the citizens of Bridgewater who will have to step up and fund any increases to compensation. But we all need to know that it's been justified based on a complete review of performance and salary market analysis. As our elected representatives, I strongly urge you to put this order on hold for now. Until you've conducted a formal performance review as stipulated in the town charter and administrative code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valdi. Do we have anyone else from the public?
Good evening, Pat Neri, Lakeside Drive. And I have a few items to speak about this evening, so I think I can fit them in. First, I am concerned about an ordinance being introduced by councillor Moore this evening. While I'm in full agreement with the motivation to address a rat situation. That exists in some areas of town. I'm not in agreement with some of the language in the proposed ordinance. This is a great opportunity to put in place an ordinance that will dispose of rats. However, the sentence in the ordinance under rat control that states use of rat traps and baits if necessary. Most towns are trying to rid themselves and eliminate baits as they create devastating problems for other wildlife. Excuse me. You may have heard of escars, second generation. Something rodenticides, animal rodenticides, which means if you poison a mouse or a rat. And then a critter eats that mouse or rat, they both die. This has happened to owls and our bald eagles as well as foxes. You may be aware that there are bills at our state house. That contain language requiring exterminators to inform their customers of the harms that these baits do. Please reconsider this language and take an opportunity to do the right thing. Second, I know that you are discussing our town manager's change of contract terms tonight. How can that be? I know the contract term isn't up until June twenty twenty-five. This contract was negotiated and settled back in February two thousand twenty-two, just last year. What good is a contract? To reconsider the terms of this contract will set a precedent for any town employees. And I understand that there has not been a performance review for some, sometime. I urge you to not go forward with rewriting a contract midstream. It can be negotiated at the end of the term. And I also wanted to mention that. I've spoken to all of you about the property at three thirty-three Bedford Street here in town. The general public has been using that property as a landfill. And nothing has been done that I'm aware of. I've reached out to all of you and a couple of councillors specifically. This really has to be addressed. We did pass an ordinance back in two thousand seventeen about people that have property with these problems. However, it only addresses residents. This is a commercial property owned by out of town people. It has to be followed up. If you go by there and I sent you all pictures of that landfill, so I'd like you to address that. And I thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll close. Uh, citizen open forum and move ahead to item E appointments. Uh, we have three appointments tonight. We'll take them in order. The first one is finance committee town council reappointment of Nathan Schofield. For the term twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six, I would ask the town manager to provide us with an overview.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, finance committee. Reappointment is actually your, the council's appointment. Um, so Mr. Schofield has, uh, been on the finance committee for a number of years and is, uh, interested in continuing on. Um, so it's really the, the council's, uh, option. The council approves, uh, three seats on the finance committee. Town clerk, uh, uh, appoints three seats on the, on the finance committee and then I appoint three seats. So this is your appointment, but certainly he's willing to continue and he's been a great member of the finance committee.
I would entertain a motion to approve. So we'll move second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can go to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes nine to zero. Next one we have is Parks and Recreation reappointment of Michael Flaherty for the term of twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six. Defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Flaherty has been, uh, again, been a longtime member of Parks and Rec and, uh, as, uh. The most recent, uh, chair of that committee has done a fine job and, uh, I would encourage his reappointment to, uh, Parks and Rec.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move second.
Got a motion of second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes nine to zero. The last one we have is planning board reappointment of Michael McDonald, uh, for the term of twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight. Defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, planning board are five-year terms, uh, by design and Mr. McDonald has, uh, is finishing up his first five-year term and has asked for reappointment. He brings a, uh, different voice to the planning board, so I would encourage the council to, uh, approve his reappointment to the, uh, planning board.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes nine to zero. Uh, thank you to the three volunteers, uh, for your participation on our committees and councils. Moving on to item F hearings, we have none. Moving on to item G license transactions, tonight we have none. Uh, moving on to item H presentations, uh, we have an auditor's presentation. I'll defer to the town manager to introduce it and then we welcome, uh, the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would introduce, uh, Paul and Tony, uh, Roselli. Um, and Tony Roselli has been, uh, our auditor. He, uh, owns and operates an auditing firm, an accounting firm. Uh, fairly well known throughout the state and, uh, and he has been, as I mentioned, our auditor for some time. Um, and with that, I don't know if Paul or Tony is gonna lead the show, so I'll introduce Paul or Tony. And as soon as I. Find your, uh, presentation, Tony, I will. Bring it up on the screen.
Thank you for having me. Uh, while Mike is fumbling with the screen. Uh, lot of familiar face or a few familiar faces and a lot of new faces, so I look forward to, uh, presenting the audit for two thousand and twenty-two. You're laughing over.
I've been around too long.
It's a familiar face, I think.
You're one of the familiar ones.
Thank you.
There you go.
Great, Mike. So if we can go to the second slide, uh, a real quick, uh, thumbnail here. Uh, I'm Tony Roselli, uh, partner with the firm Roselli, Plackton Associates. Paul. Uh, is with me here tonight. He'll be, uh, joining in the conversation later. Um, so today I'm gonna look at economic trends in Bridgewater. I'm gonna focus on some challenges. I think it's really important. Uh, we've never really put that slide up and I think it's very important. Uh, you all are aware of what I'm gonna talk about on the challenges, but this is for the general public. I think it's important for them to know what's going on in town government. Uh, statewide, nationally, everywhere. So we, we, that's gonna be an interesting slide to get to. We'll talk about your other post-employment benefits, pension. Uh, a handful of informational items and at the end we'll talk about findings and recommendations. So, um, let's go to the next slide. So, uh, for those of you who are not here in two thousand and eight. Uh, it's been a long road. Challenged, but well traveled. You can see that back in two thousand and eight. We had the financial, um, basically the financial collapse of the, uh, the banking system and. And everything else that went on back then and Bridgewater got nailed really hard. Uh, in fact, in two thousand and nine, you had a negative, uh, reserve balance, which is very difficult to get to. You recovered a little bit in ten and it's gone up straight since then, but back then you had. A B A A bond rating. No one would lend you any money. It was junk bond status. Um, there were deficits in many accounts. It was. It, it was a very problematic time for the town of, uh, Bridgewater. Uh, you, uh, back then it was a board of selectmen. And you can see from a financial standpoint, the solvency of the town has gone in a straight arrow. Uh, straight up through two, two thousand and twenty-two. So that at two thousand and twenty-two, you have ten point seven million in reserve balances. So it's, it's a great accomplishment to get there, uh, to actually. Accumulate this in the bank account while still servicing your constituents. So, um, I think that's been a very, uh. Very great accomplishment and it's reflected in your bond rating, which we'll get to a little later in the, um. In the, uh, discussion. Any questions on this slide? Okay, so next slide, uh, just a comparison of where you stand versus your expenses. So your reserves are your stabilization funds, your free cash, your undesignedated, all added together. That becomes your reserve, um, amount. The reserve ratio is taking that amount and dividing it by your expenses. And to be in a tier one category on that, you need to exceed fifteen percent. That's a standard and poor. Who does bond rating, credit evaluations, likes to see fifteen percent or higher. And you're right at fifteen percent right now. You're about fifteen point five percent. So, uh, that compares with the high metric, the state average is about. Somewhere around twelve percent now, so you're above the state average and the low metrics are down about four percent. That's what you want to avoid. You were actually lower than that back in two thousand and eight. Okay, any questions on this slide? Okay, let's move along. So just comparing twenty-one to twenty-two, uh, your reserves decreased slightly. From twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-one kind of peaked at a little bit over eleven million. Uh, you're at about ten point seven, like I said, right now. Your local receipts exceeded forecast by two point five. Your appropriations beat budget by point five. So in a normal year, you would have gone up in reserves. But you use free cash of four point two million. There was a snow and ice deficit of five hundred K, so that's why the reserves kinda hit a little speed bump there and came back down in twenty-two. Um, you're still above the state average, like we said. Uh, you're in the tier one and your bond rating is now a double A three. So you got to the double A category, which is a nice place to be. That's just below the triple A. Uh, Bridgewater will probably never get a triple A, so you're pretty much, you can go up a couple of levels in the double A. Uh, but the triple A, you've got, um, you've got the, um, the, the prison or the, um, you know, the facility, you've got the college. It holds you back, uh, from really getting, uh, consideration for triple A. Uh, but it's much higher than the B double A, which was the junk rating. Uh, your debt is very, um, I mean, you get a lot of investor. Uh, interest when you go out to do a borrowing now. So, um, people like the town of, uh, Bridgewater's debt. And, um. One thing I would note is when you, maybe when you do your next bond rating, you may wanna use S and P. As just a, um, a different set of eyes. S and P favors a smaller community than Moody's. Moody's is driven more towards like a Cambridge or a, um. Uh, a Newton, you know, like a community that has more, uh, a, a bigger community that has a lot more going on, a lot more equalized valuation. The S and P's metrics favor the smaller communities. So I believe Bridgewater could actually move up in rating if it were to use the S and P on its next, um, on its next offering. Uh, any questions on the economic trends? Okay, let's go to the next slide. All right, here are the challenges. Okay, let's talk about this, cuz. Unless you're under a carpet somewhere, these are really important. So inflation is cruising at forty-year highs. It's starting to come down a little bit with the feds. Um, doing their aggressive, um, qualitative easing and interest rate hikes. But it's still pretty high. It's, uh, I think it was about four point five or five percent on the last, uh. On the last reading, but it was as high as over eight percent earlier in the year. So what has this done? Okay, it's created a problem with wages. You cannot hire people. And put them in positions unless you increase your wages. That's what we're finding. That's very, uh, challenging to municipalities. Is actually bringing in eligible people that are qualified and experienced at a reasonable cost. Salaries are moving up. So that's one of the challenges you're facing in your budget process. You're facing it with your unions and you're facing it with your skilled. Uh, workers in non-union positions and it's something that's going on throughout the state. Next is your construction indexes. Those are, those are screaming high. I had a couple of towns that went out and got estimates to build schools. One of them was about a thirty million dollar estimate. By the time. They got done navigating through all these increased costs and got new estimates, it was double. So it was, it was just the day, now they've gotta go in and decide what to cut because it's not gonna pass. Uh, on top of that, you get the financing costs. So that project not only has gone escalated on the construction side, but it's also escalated on the financing side. So you're getting hit double on a, on a project that back in two thousand and twenty would have been very, very inexpensive to build. Now is causing problems. So you're gonna have to go out and get your debt overrides and, uh, just creating a lot of problems, cutting back on what your construction's gonna look like. So I'm finding that that, that is an issue. Uh, energy costs. Couple of months ago, I got my electric bill and I thought I had missed a month. I opened it and I said, I don't remember missing a month and it was actually that month's bill. It doubled. I'm like, you've gotta be kidding me. So, uh, it, it's hitting homes, it's hitting, uh, the musical, um. Workful, uh, not the workforce, but your, your cost to run your buildings and just the cost of delivery of services is going up. And the problem is you've only got two and a half percent to work with. Your, your property taxes can only go up two and a half percent by law. Uh, unless you get some robust revenue growth or if you do an override. So you're dealing with a two and a half percent increase in revenue, but you've got all these other things. That are creating challenges. So I know you folks are all aware of this, but this is for the general public to really understand. What goes on when you're getting into that budget process. Uh, any questions on this slide? Pretty straightforward, pretty common sense. All right, let's go to the next, uh. All right, let's talk about two, two big items. That, um, that are out there. I call them the stealth liabilities. Other post-employment benefits are the, it's the cost of insurance to retired individuals. And that cost is going higher and higher because rates are going up. People are living longer. It's great for us old guys. We know we can live a little longer now. They added that to the life expectancies. But that's just gonna create the run on these costs to go out further and further. What's happening is you're creating a liability now. That people are working for you, that you will owe them at a later date when they retire, if they get fully vested in your insurance. So, um, you have an actuary that does this. Uh, calculation every year for you. And it was thirty-seven point nine million dollars at the end of twenty-two. It actually decreased by six million because you were able to use a higher discount rate of four point nine five percent, given the market conditions. So, um, so it's still a very high number, the thirty-seven point nine million. Uh, the town has been making free cash transfer, transfers of about a hundred and ten thousand. So you're doing something, but it's very small in relation to the liability. Uh, right now you have eight hundred thousand put aside for this. So you're still, like I said, well-funded. You're only at two, uh, not, you're not well-funded. You're still only at two percent. And your average age of employees is around forty-nine, so that's only gonna get worse in about. Ten or twelve years. ten or twelve years. So if we go to the next slide, we can talk about pension and how it relates to OPEB.
So, can we go back just real quick? The thirty-seven point nine, is the six million favorable taken from that already? So it would have been forty-three point nine?
Yeah, the prior year was forty-four million. Yep. So it's gone down. The prior year, they had to use a discount rate of three percent because the market wasn't as robust. So the actuary was allowed to use a higher uh discount rate this year. That won't always be the case. So that number is going to fluctuate, but it's a big number.
Yes, question. Tony, can I ask a question? The thirty-seven point nine million, I know you're going to talk about, maybe tie this into the next slide, but do you think there'll ever be um a mandate, a mandate of a funding schedule like there is for pension? Do you ever, do you see that coming down?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because the pension liabilities might be paid off hopefully within five or six years from the county. And that would free up, it would free up a lot of money to be able to appropriate it towards this liability. It would also free up a lot of money to do things that we'd like to do in the town as well. But do you see a funding, this isn't mandated that we
This is optional.
You want to see that when you audit, I know that.
Yeah.
But do you think a funding schedule like this may come from the state at some point?
I think by two thousand and thirty, when most of these funds pensions are going to be very close to a hundred percent.
Right.
Eighty to a hundred percent, I think you're going to start seeing some rumblings. They started the rumblings back in two thousand and eight. I don't know if you recall that. And then the financial problems hit and the state said, let's forget that. You know, they're not going to be able to afford that. I think that's going to be readdressed because the OPEB liability statewide is out of control right now. It's it's a big, big number. And the states and the towns are headed for a big problem in probably about twelve or thirteen years. So I would say that I think the state is definitely going to do something like they did back in nineteen eighty-nine for the pensions. And it's taken what, nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand, over forty years just to get that problem, you know, resolved. So, so I do see that to answer your question. Any questions on this slide? And we can go to pension and show how it ties in to the comments the counselor had mentioned. So the pension liability is twenty-four million, an improvement of four million over the prior year. And Plymouth, the town does not have its own pension system. It belongs to Plymouth County. In O- OPEB, it has its own system, but for pension, it belongs to Plymouth County with all the other towns in Plymouth County. And Plymouth County, uh, I know you'll yell at me for this. Still uses a seven point eight seven five discount rate, which uh is a tad higher than most of the other counties in the state, which are down around seven point three, seven point one. So uh, so there is a little bit of risk, I think, in that rate. Uh, if you have some hiccups in the, in the market, uh, it could um, it could ruin your plans of being fully funded by, what was it, Dennis, two thousand and thirty?
I think Plymouth County's twenty, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay. So uh, so that's not too far away. So hopefully there's smooth sailing until then. Uh, but right now you're seventy-five point five percent funded. So you're close.
That's a good number though.
That's a very good number. Um, my estimate was that you'd be down around, you'd still be above sixty if you used uh, like seven point three. You'd still be above uh, the the sixty. So um, so it's not um it's not something that I view as a major problem because you are well-funded. So um now what's going to happen if Plymouth County does get fully funded, the amount of money that you have to pay, the assessment that you have to pay Plymouth County, about what, eighty percent of that frees up?
I don't know how much the budget is.
You've got a normal cost
Yeah.
that you will always have to pay.
Six millions.
The unfunded cost of your assessment will free up. That's a big number. And what a lot of towns are doing are they creating policies now to say, let's fund OPEB when that happens. And um, and I'm hoping Parac, Parac allows you, when you get to a hundred percent or a hundred and three percent to kind of play with that. To me, as long as you're funding OPEB, they should allow that to be a fully funded because say it does slip, you can skip your OPEB for a year and go back to your pension assessment. They're afraid that if you get to one oh three or one oh five and say, we're a hundred percent funded and then you have a bad year, you're right back to a budget problem because now you've released your pension liability. And I think you know what I'm talking about when, with that. So Parac is talking about a hundred and twenty percent. That's what I'm hearing. And I'm like, and they got a lot of tomatoes thrown at them when that uh discussion was happening. Uh, I think that's a little steep. I could see a hundred and five percent being, you know, safety zone, but or if the town said, we're going to fund OPEB with it. Because now that's a, an optional item. It's not a mandated item. You could decide, if you have a black swan year, you could decide not to fund OPEB that year. So um, I know this is a little complicated, but it it's important to understand these two liabilities. It's about sixty million dollars combined. And uh, any questions on those two slides?
And that's not a Bridgewater problem. It's a, it's a statewide.
Statewide problem. Statewide. This is not unique to Bridgewater. In fact, being in Plymouth County, you're in good shape because if you're in um Worcester County, you're at fifty-three percent. Uh, if you're in uh, if you're in the city of Springfield, you're still in the forties. So there's, there's some this, there's a lot of them that have problems out there. Any questions on those two slides? Okay, let's see what's next. Informational. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Gargano, one of my partners and uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Gargano again. Um, I'm just going to do two slides, one on informational items and one on some comments uh that we, you know, of issues we found during the audit. So SAS one fourteen and one fifteen basically require us to communicate to you if we found any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies during our audit. So I'm happy to say that no, we did, we found no such deficiencies. Um, and it's a clean opinion. Um, and then when I talk about the comments in the next slide, they're relatively minor. So there's, there's no major issues that are required of us to communicate to. Um, the second bullet is network security. We always put this in our um management letters, uh, just to continue to remind people to stay vigilant. You know, every year we think about pulling this from, from our management letter and then there's always multiple issues at different, different communities. We have you know, at least five of our communities a year have, have some type of attack. So we're just, we always put this in there as a reminder uh, to stay vigilant and uh, be aware of any um any deficiencies in your networks. Um, Gasby eighty-seven, uh, the Gasby is uh, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Typically, they, they release minor um pronouncements every year that, you know, don't really rise to the, the level of us talking to you, but Gasby eighty-seven uh was the least gaspy. Um, in the past, you were required to record capital leases on your financial statements. Um, but with Gasby eighty-seven, we were now required to look at revenue generating leases and agreements as well. Um, so there were two agreements that we were required to report and record on your financial statements, both related to the golf course. Um, you have an operator and a restaurant agreement. Um, so basically any future guaranteed monies as part of those contracts, uh, their present value is discounted back and recorded as receivable on your financial statements. So again, only guaranteed amounts on both of those. There is also uh variable amounts that you get based on sales and activity. Those would not be part of your receivable. Uh, but if you look on your financial statements in the Golf Course Enterprise Fund, you would see uh those receivables. Uh, and then I, I believe starting for our next audit, we won't show that as a receivable. Uh, we won't show that as an enterprise fund. It'll all be a governmental fund. Still does not change the fact that um, that lease receivable is on your, on the books. And then ARPA, um, as you're aware, um, major federal, federal money coming in. Um, so in case you're not aware, especially for the new, the new members, uh, we are required to do what's called a single audit, which is an audit of your grants, uh, your grants. Um, but only if you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in a year. So because you're a part of a regional school district and most of the grants typically for communities in Massachusetts are school, you're usually only on the cusp of hitting that seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, you know, it's a, it's usually kind of, you know, a tough decision that, you know, we, we always have to go through your ledger very carefully to make sure we know exactly where your grant expenditures are to make sure we don't miss anything. With ARPA and the coronavirus relief monies, it's really throwing you way above that seven hundred and fifty thousand. So for the past several years, you've had a single audit and we would expect that to continue for another three or four years minimum. Um, thankfully, the, the last few federal audits have been clean, nothing to report, no findings. Uh, you've done a good job managing those grants.
Right, another question for you.
Sure.
So on the um, the leases specifically for the golf course and the restaurant, is that discounted over the life of the lease or is it discounted strictly on an annualized basis? In regards to the guaranteed revenue, do we record it as we receive it or are we going to record it when we sign the lease?
Uh, so we record the receivable when you sign the lease only for the, again, only for the portion that's guaranteed. And even if you have a renewal, so let's say you know, we, we look at a lot of these agreements and they may be twenty-year, uh, twenty-year agreements, but they, they're scheduled for renewal, you know, in five-year chunks. It's only what's guaranteed. Um, and it's, you know, subject to non-renewal. But when we record it, it is almost if not one hundred percent deferred. So it's a receivable and what's called a deferred inflow. Um, so the revenue, so the receivables recorded on your books, it doesn't hit equity or net position. I know it's
That doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
But you, so we're, and we, so
So you got a generated asset, but you're not allowed to record any of the benefits from that.
Correct. You'll, you'll record the revenue at each year annually as it, as it comes in.
Guys, let that go. Wow.
Yeah, exactly. We look at it as an, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's, I just want to make sure I understood it the way it's crazy.
Uh, we, we feel the same way. I look at it as almost an informational item. It's, it's, it's really just alerting the reader of the financial statements that, hey, there is this guaranteed stream out there, but you're right. You're not realizing a benefit in your net position at all.
Thank you.
Just another quick question.
Oh.
Um, I just want to make sure I understood the network security statement. You didn't actually audit the security. You're just saying as a general tip, you're seeing an increase in uh vulnerability. Okay.
Correct. We are, as part of our audit procedures, we, we are required each year to look at on a top level, you know, to document what you do. So we, we, we would, you know, we have two, I think two years ago, we had them fill out a questionnaire and then we updated it every year. So yeah, we do, we do need to look at that as part of our audit, our audit procedures, but not to the level that
Just to make sure we have controls or something.
Exactly. Yeah.
Exactly. Thanks. Uh, Council Robinson?
And I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask this question, uh, but, but since you just mentioned the school district, how is the school district um included into this process?
Um, well, because it's a separate entity.
Yeah.
Um, it, we, we're only, we just uh, it's really on the expense. So you're paying, you know, the assessments and twelve installments. So obviously we're looking, we do a basic, we'll, we'll pull some invoices. We do some testing because it is the largest expense out there, but that's really to the, the extent of it. We usually make sure that, you know, what they say in their assessment letter is what you paid out and that's, that's kind of all we all we really have to do because they are, they are, like you said, they're a complete separate entity.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Chase?
Thank you. Uh, I'm just wondering what kind of uh, reporting disclosure thresholds exist under Gasby, uh, typically with respect to uh towns such as ourselves, uh, whether it be litigation risk or, or, or other required disclosures that you need to include in your report?
Uh, well, as far as litigate, I mean, there is a materiality calculation. So we, for each community, we would go through and determine what's a material transaction or what a material liability would be. And obviously, you know, it's mandated every, as part of our audit, that we, you know, send out a legal letter, get a letter back from council, making us, alerting us to any type of litigation and things like that. And if it, if it rose to the if it was probable and measurable, we then, and if it ticked over that materiality level, we would disclose that in the notes to the financial statement and also discuss and potentially have to disclose, you know, to record that as an actual liability on the financial.
And do you take into account of, you know, other, what might be unfunded mandates, for example, from the state that would uh impact the town? I mean, obviously we've discussed uh, you know, pension funding uh liabilities, but are there other matters that would enter into your analysis that would be reportable in your uh final report?
You know, typically, you know, I mean, if there was environmental issues, we'd have to see if there was an environmental remediation liability. You know, things like that. But not, again, nothing that, nothing that we know of that's been, that trips that, that disclosure.
Alright, thank you.
Any additional questions?
Last slide. Um, and as I mentioned, there's, these are relatively minor findings. I think if we, if I was discussing the management letter for ten years ago, this would be multiple slides, but you know, it's a testament to what the town has done over the last ten years to address, you know, to take our management letters seriously um and address them. Um, these are really just three minor findings that have been here for several years um that are, one is wrapped up, one, two, we expect to be resolved uh when we come back to do next year's audit. Uh, tailings, what we're talking about here is just basically old outstanding checks, amounts that are stale and are owed to um either vendors or employees. Um, so in this case, there was maybe fifteen, twenty thousand dollars were owed to vendors that were stale, sitting on, on the bank racks. And there's a process in Massachusetts where you can advertise them for a year. Um, and then once no one has claimed the money, then you just bring it back into the general fund. Uh, so
You donate, you donate a sheet? A sheet to the state?
No, uh, you, you, you can.
Can, right.
You can. However, municipality, under Mass General Law, municipalities are given the ability to do that process, to, to avoid that and do the advertising process themselves and reap the benefit by claiming, you know, taking back any unclaiming. But there is a, there is a, there is a process currently. There, there has been a process for several years. Um, it's just that, like I said, when we looked at, when we looked at the payroll bank reconciliations, they were completely clear. No old outstanding checks. The vendor had some left on it. So we kept, we kept the finding, but I believe that's being addressed. Um, stagnant balances. What we're talking about here is the Department of Revenue about five years ago came to the audit firms and said, you know, wanted us to highlight this in our management letters. They felt that a lot of communities were leaving funds on their on their books that where the, the purpose is done, there's no activity. They felt that it was a little cumbersome on their free cash uh process when they were approving the free cash of the towns with, you know, some communities would have, you know, fifty, a hundred, two hundred of, you know, old accounts just sitting there and they'd have to flip through and go through. Um, so they, they asked the audit firms to point out if there were any stagnant balances. The town still had some, I believe there was close to forty. And the dollar amount was about over a hundred thousand of completely inactive accounts. Um, we know it was a multi-year process. They've actually whittled it down. So the finance team has been going back to the departments, making sure they know what the purpose of the original account was, make sure that the purpose is truly done and and um, they can close out the monies into the general fund. Or in the case of capital projects, they can come back to you and have them reallocated to another capital purpose. Uh, so that's been going, that's been ongoing for several years and, and the amount of the, the stagnant accounts has, has been decreased. Um, and finally, we had put uh for several years, a recommendation that you implement human resource software to um streamline and automate some of the payroll and benefits activities. Um, and that, that was resolved several years ago.
Can I ask just a clarifying question? On the first two, are there issues from two thousand and twenty-one that still exist or are you seeing the same issue surface each year, essentially new instances of the same issue?
No, it's more in both cases, tailings and stagnant balances. It's more of a case of the town, the finance team making headway, but not clearing it entirely.
Got it.
Haven't really seen, I wouldn't say there's been any new issues.
And when, when you provide us with findings, do we provide you back with a management response plan? So here's what we intend to do.
Yes. Yep. And we actually, if you've looked at the management letter, we actually publish it there. We uh, it was pretty standard on all our management letters. Um, we've kind of removed it, you know, most communities don't want the response in there for whatever reason, but you know, the finance team here wanted the, wanted it documented in the management letter. So yeah, so if you look at any of your management letters, their response and their action plan will be in there.
Great. Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item I, uh, Town Manager's Report. We have the High Street Bridge Closure Update.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kevin.
Computer's acting up, so I'll go off the top of my head. The, uh, High Street, uh, closure has happened. The High Street Dam, uh, work has begun in earnest. All the utilities have been relocated with the exception of, uh, I believe Verizon Copper Line. Uh, which is, uh, actually, at this point, uh, causing a slight delay, not a critical delay, uh, yet. But Verizon will be on site tomorrow to move, uh, their lines, um, and should be done on Friday, so that's, that's good news. No reported, um, disasters in terms of detours. We do have some additional signage, which is, uh, in the process of being made, so we'll be on site. Uh, and will be posted at at some of the critical, uh, areas. But, uh, so far, um, the closure seems to have gone pretty well. People seem to have been fairly well notified. There hasn't been, uh, you know, any hue and cry. So, um, the work, as I've mentioned a number of times, the work should be completed by the middle of October. And, uh, and the bridge, the new bridge, uh, reopened at that point. It won't be finished, but it'll be open, uh, to traffic at that point. So right now, no major holdups, uh, work is proceeding as planned. And, uh, actual dam removal, I I should point out that the Coffey Dam is now, um, diverting just about all the water. There's no water going over the dam. That's obviously by, uh, design. And then the, um, uh, dam itself will be removed probably sometime the week of, uh, the seventeenth. Although I don't know an exact, uh, date or time, but that's when the, the, uh, dam should start to be removed. It's not very exciting process. It's simply a large excavator picking up rocks and moving them over to the shoreline. So, uh, we have had a number of press inquiries, uh, wanting to know, you know, if there's going to be an explosion, wanting to know if there's going to be, you know. Fireworks and, you know, water blasting all over the place. That's not the kind of, uh, dam removal it is. It's pretty, uh, pretty boring, to tell you the truth. But, but we have had some national press interest because, uh, on, on sort of the environmental, uh, side. And the importance of the dam removal to, uh, species in in the Hockmuck Swamp and and Lake Nip and so forth. So, um, but we're responding to those, uh, as they come in. But so far, so good, nothing, uh, no, nothing bad to report. Certainly, it's all going according to plan. But happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the town manager? Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to the next sec.
President, could I, for next meeting, Mr. Dutton, can we have an update on the college mobile station? Exactly where we are, what we're going to do and how we're going to get there?
Absolutely.
Walking by that, Fourth of July was a little disappointing in the state that it's in right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel George. Counsel Lindy?
Is this the time to ask a question for something to be looked at in the future?
Yeah, you should ask for an agenda item for next time.
Okay, um, so I did want to ask, I've gotten a number of constituent inquiries about flags at the memorial building and the library. So I just want to be able to answer those questions. Great.
Thank you. So if we could add both of those items to the next agenda. Any additional topics for the next manager's update? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, item J, discussions, we have none. Item K, committee reports, do we have any committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to item L, legislation for action. The first item is Order O F Y twenty three zero six six, Contract Amendment for the Town Manager. As a reminder, uh, this was introduced by the Town Council President. After some discussion in executive session, uh, with the Town Council. This is, uh, an amendment that would adjust both the salary, uh, for the town manager. To increase it to two hundred and ten thousand, uh, and would extend, uh, the contract. The existing contract term by an additional two years. I would entertain, uh, a motion to approve.
I would actually like to make a motion to amend.
Oh, sorry.
Before approve.
Yeah, um, take the motion to amend.
Yep, so in section one, what I'd like to propose is amending it to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Keeping it basically the same term. As what we currently have.
So we would, uh, under the amendment, uh, we would, the salary increase would stay, the term would stay at the current.
Correct.
End date. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
We have a second for discussion. How do we have any discussion? I personally, I, uh, would be interested in maybe hearing a little bit more. About the, the term, and I can share maybe as an intro, my, my own perspective on the existing term. So I think, um, for me, Bridgewater is right at the cusp of accelerating some significant strategic initiatives. We're accelerating the downtown. Uh, we are accelerating our roadways improvement plan. We are right in the middle of a significant improvement to the water. We're in the middle of a significant improvement to the fire station. And we're in the middle, uh, of supporting and endorsing some, uh, accelerated improvements in the education system. So of the Town Council's five priorities, all of them are, uh, in process or in the early stages of starting. With some very promising, I think, um, opportunities ahead of us. All of those things, from my perspective, require. A multi-year commitment to those programs and also to the people that are participating in executing against those programs. And my concern is, uh, if we have the risk of change in the middle, kind of at the height of these. Like critical projects, um, I personally think that, uh, it could be catastrophic for this. Very real set of momentum that we've established, uh, for the five critical things that Bridgewater needs. So I personally support the longer timeframe, uh, because I think we need to show that commitment to get, get these foundational things done in Bridgewater.
Thank you, Mr. President. On that, on that note, I mean, every town should always have a vision. Every town should always have projects on the books. Every town should always have things we need to do in the future. Positions change, people leave, people retire. Um, so I, I think that, although I respect your. Your analysis, um, I don't think that that should be the sole reason why we should not stick to the same terms of the contract. But we should, we have, you know, a, a long-term, always, we should always have a long-term plan, always have a capital need. I mean, the capital plan was out to five years. Um, that will be changed and add a year added all the time. So I think that, you know, um, people, people change in the terms, the, the reasoning to not extend it. That doesn't mean that those things won't get done. Um, some things take, take longer than others. So, I mean, I, I do support the amendment, um, to keep it to twenty, to bring it to twenty twenty five.
Would like to add to my statement, but I'd like to hear other feedback first. Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, um, uh, I do believe I concur with your remarks with respect to the. Nature of the long-term projects that are just really commencing. And, you know, I, I would say that, um, I've lived in the town for thirty five years. And I have never seen the degree of, uh, of interest. And, uh, enthusiasm for some of the projects that we're now beginning to discuss. And, and really beginning to see, uh, pieces fall into place. I do fear that we would jeopardize the potential long-term feasibility of some of those, uh, projects. If we were to, um, not assure continuity. And, and, uh, certainly, uh, I agree with Counselor Gallagher, the fact that, uh, long-term planning is, um. Is essential for, for any town. In that respect though, I, I have to wonder, uh, for decades past, um, in this particular town. That long-term planning I have not seen, um, until current years. And, um, I, I frankly think that it, it's a remarkable opportunity that we have. Presented to us, um, that we're really beginning to just get our heads around right now. And I, I honestly think we have to give it every good opportunity for success. And that this is one way to assure continuity.
Thank you, Counsel Chase. Are there other thoughts? Uh, Counsel Lindy?
I think Susie's hand was before mine. I'll defer to her and then.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think that there's so much validity in everything that, you know, is being said tonight. As well as some of the comments that we've made before as well. I, and I actually want to expand on to, um, uh, Counsel Gallagher's comments around. The amendment, there's two things I think are really, really important, something also that, um, one of our citizens brought to, to bear. We have skipped some steps. Per our charter. So unfortunately, um, Mr. Dutton's in a tough position where every single year there's an election. So there's turnover. And in this particular election year, nearly half of our council is now new, including myself. So I can't speak for the other new counselors, but I will speak for myself as a new counselor that, um, I think it can set a challenging precedent. To go against our charter and skip some steps. Um, and then the other thing too is, um, I would like to be able to have an opportunity to get to know. Mr. Dutton as a council member and in his role as the town administrator. And un, and unfortunately, the timing is challenging and the reality is there, right? So, um. I think that those are important things to consider. And, you know, I, I understand, we, we would love to have that continuity, right? But life is unpredictable. Things happen in people's lives where, you know, people leave roles, they have other personal challenges in life. So nothing is ever guaranteed, right? So I wouldn't want the fear of, oh, but we may lose some momentum. The momentum is not just one person. It is multiple people, including this council, including the administration. So, um, I, I don't, I'm not as worried about that piece. So I would, I would like to make sure that we are going through the due process. And also enabling time for new counselors to be able to work with current and former counselors around things like goal setting. This is a big increase. It's a significant contract change. So, um, I just put those comments out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. Counsel Lindy?
Well, you saved me a little bit of time because I'm going to concur with a lot of what you just said. I'm in favor of the amendment as well because I don't want to see us skip those steps. I think evaluations are critical and it's in both the administrative code and the charter. I, I, as a manager, I did evaluations twice a year. One was for salary and one was for, um, merit and benefits. That set goals and, you know, we get a town manager's report every meeting. I'd love to see us in the agenda, see how the goals are being addressed. And I've sat here three times so far, temporarily as an appointment for the four month and now here. And I'm not a brand new counselor, but I echo Susie's comments about getting to know the town manager. I think he's very professional. I think he's very approachable. I'm just worried about precedents being set forward. When we're dealing with the union negotiations at a much smaller rate than department heads, so I, I would support the amendment.
Thank you, Counsel Lindy. Any additional comments? Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Um, in just regard to the amendment, um, you know, going back to what you said, Mr. President. And what Mr. Chase said, um, I do think a lot of these projects that are coming up are, are coming to a critical mass. And like anything, the leadership that's in place to make sure that those projects go forward, I think is very important. You see changes in leadership, you see changes in priorities in that new leadership's position. You know, Mr. Dutton's been with us for ten plus years, as we just heard, um, from the, the report that we just had from the auditors. Our reserve balances from his beginning and his tendency to now is, is kind of, you know, nice trajectory incline. We've seen a lot of positive changes in Bridgewater here. And, and again, that's momentum that's been going on since he's been here. I don't want to see that change. Um, I think to maintain that leadership, he's, he's expressed that he wants to, uh, continue in that leadership role. During these times, um, so I would not be opposed to, uh, continue the language as written, um, on the twenty, uh, to twenty twenty seven. But in what, uh, Ms. Robinson said in regards to reviews, again, the council has changed now to a point where. Under the new leadership role that you have now, Mr. Moore, as the president, you will obviously have to take all that review into consideration. And get those, uh, that ball rolling. Um, I, as a former president of the council, did that number of years ago with him. And, um, but again, there's maybe a couple, uh, years here that, uh, it wasn't, uh, done as, as efficiently as it should. So we'll make sure this time around, we get it done. But I still don't think that changes the precedent of what the past ten years has done. With the leadership of Minister Dutton in the, in the town of Bridgewater. So, I mean, I've worked with him for over five years of the ten years he's been here and I've been very happy with the, with the work that he's done. And I think, uh, year by year, it only continues to improve with the direction of the town is going in. So, um, I, you know, still in favor of the language as written going forward. As far as presence going forward, I think this is basically, uh, uh, an order that's basically based on his situation. And his, um, work with the town so far, I wouldn't say this would be a precedent for any, uh, town manager situation going forward. Again, if we were to see a change in leadership, where the new town manager at some point down the line, who knows what the goals of that new person would be? So, um, with the trajectory that we're going on, the projects in place, I'd like to see the continuity stay where it's at. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Uh, yes, Counsel Gallagher?
Just to follow up on that, um, and I respect Counsel Perry's comments, but this doesn't mean that. The town manager has done in twenty twenty five. It doesn't mean it at all. As a matter of fact, this might even, you know, bring forward some things quicker. Or may even bring out more initiatives with him and his staff to, uh, bring some of these things forward. And show in twenty twenty five or early, early twenty twenty five, when we have to look at renegotiating a three-year contract. At that point, at that point. So your, your comments were making it sound like it would be over in twenty twenty five. It's not that, that's not the case. This, this is continuity by making this amendment. This is continuity by making it twenty twenty five and sticking to the original terms. The salary is a, it was the main reason why this was brought forward. The salary was the main request by the town manager. And that has been addressed. I think, I think sticking to bringing it back to twenty twenty five is original term. Keeps continuity and certainly will give us time to do an evaluation in the next two years. And then see whether, you know, he's interested or we are interested, whoever the council's at that time, of another three-year contract. And a lot of these other initiatives should be well on their way. And at that point, it would be time to say, well, now we don't want to lose them. You know, the fire station is half-built, the downtown is being totally reconstructed. We don't want to lose them, absolutely. At that point, perhaps, but, um, I think that I'd like to see some of these things at least get off the ground. Have a chance to evaluate him, particularly the newer counselors, to have a, a flavor of, of what we see in an evaluation. And then to, and address that, uh, address an extension or a new contract in just a year and a half, people. It's just a year and a half. So I would support the amendment.
Any additional comments? So maybe if I could add another one. So I think. My belief is that when a town manager leaves, you have significant disruption for at least a year, probably two. Because you have an outbound town manager, you have to then go through the full process to recruit someone. They then have to come in and make their connections. They then have to align with the new council. So, so you're in this period of stagnation. I'm personally very nervous about that because I think even when we heard earlier. About the fact that wages are going up, we know for a fact that other towns are recruiting a sta, established, experienced town managers. We know that. And, uh, I think for, for me, the more commitment we can show to a town manager. That we believe in the vision, that we know he's going to be successful. that we believe in the vision, that we know he's going to be successful and that we are betting on the long-term success, I feel like the better that partnership will be. My fear is when he's successful, because I know he will be, when he's successful a year and a half from now and the contract is up, the other towns that are paying market rate are going to look and say, look what's happened in the last year and a half in Bridgewater. Look at all of the progress they made. They've got the committee going. They've got a downtown revitalization effort going. They've got a new water system. They've got a roadways plan. We're preparing for a vote to fund that. All of those things are now checkmarks on the town manager's resume. And that's now the period where we're saying, okay, let's negotiate. For me, I like us saying, let's take all of that benefit for us, extend the contract to a period where we know we can actually get the value from that early investment. So for me, I, I do think that the longer investment is an investment in us as much as it's an investment in the town manager. Any additional comments? Yep, Counsel Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I ask you then directly, your position on that would then also still go against the charter administrative code? So is that something that we are comfortable as a council in that position?
Yeah. So I am not comfortable with the fact that there are parts of the administrative code in the charter that we have not executed against in the past. In general, I'll say a blanket statement. I think this is one of them. There are probably other things that we need to make sure we're catching up on. I put that on us. I, in my mind, I think that is separate from what we are trying to do for the town manager. We have had conversations about his performance. So I do feel like although we didn't follow, or we may not have followed the process, we did have some good discussion, I think, about performance there. So I do feel comfortable, for me, I know there's, I've had more experience, but for on the council, I do feel comfortable with the performance piece. And I think like Dr. Perry said, I do believe that for those things we prioritized, the town manager is executing well against those. I think the challenge is there are 100 things below our top five that are important to other people, but we just don't have the bandwidth or the funds to execute. And those are the places where I think we've heard some feedback about performance. And, and the reality is I put that on us more than the town manager. We set what's important. And I believe the town manager has executed against it. But back to your question, I think, again, we are in an environment where another town could recruit away our town manager at a market rate. And I think we need to react quickly to prevent that. And I'm comfortable with the path that we're on right now. I would welcome other thoughts on that. So we have a motion on the table. We'll close discussion at this time. The motion is to adjust the term to end in 2025, which aligns with the current contract term.
Can I ask for roll call vote?
Yep, we could do roll call vote. I would ask if we could do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Dr. Perry?
No.
Mr. McKinnon?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Three to six amendment fails.
Thank you. So at this time, I would entertain, do we have any other motions to amend? Okay. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move second for discussion?
Yep, we have a second for discussion. Do we have any discussion? Yep, Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Again, just to expand upon what you just recently said, Mr. President, is again, I think we're at a situation where other towns are out there with headhunters looking for good quality people to be town managers of their particular town. We have a good one in place. I, you know, in showing longevity, being here 10 plus years, I think this whole agreement is being done because of the fact that we do have a good town manager and we do want to see that continuity stay in place. You know, I've gotten emails from a variety of constituents, as I'm sure the rest of the council has, airing concerns and questions. And I understand each and every one of what people has brought on up. But most of us as town counselors have worked directly with him. We know what he does, how he does it. We know, you know, communication even over the years is showing improvement 10 folds with between departments and into us. So every year, I think things are getting better and better. The town is in a good spot. We're going in a good direction financially. I don't want to rock the boat. I want to see this continue on the trajectory that we're in. And if this agreement keeps that in place, gets them to a market level with other towns of similar size and locks them in for the next, you know, five years. I'm all in favor of that because I think that's going to be in the best interest of the town of Bridgewater. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Counsel Robinson?
Thanks for everyone's comments. Can I address for Counselor Perry, same question. So you are comfortable in that support that also still goes against the town charter?
Yeah, as Mr. President, Mr. Moore said, I think we're going to have to, you know, catch up to what is in that charter to get everything up to, you know, level as far as reviews. To, you know, again, everything's living and breathing. It's not made of stone. We got to have to roll and adapt, just like our council, you know, changes every, you know, every voting term. So I think at this point, we have to, you know, catch up to where the charter mandates us to be in reviews and in policy. But at this stage, I think with, with what we have put in place in front of us, I don't, I'm not against what we have on the table in front of us.
Thank you.
Counselor Lindy?
Can I ask a specific question about when we would be doing an evaluation? Because I think it's germane to the whole discussion.
We will do an evaluation this year aligned with the timelines, likely kicking it off in August.
Thank you.
Yeah. Maybe if I, oh, sorry. Counsel Murphy?
Just asking a clarifying question from Counsel Robinson. When you reference going against the charter, I understand the charter and the contract lay out the terms of an annual review. But I'm just curious to know how that goes against the charter in relation to renegotiating the contract?
So it's just a matter of we're doing some things at a sequence because there hasn't been a formal review in a few years. You know, that's, that's an important part of this. So this action will be in, it will not be fully in compliance with our administrative code and town charter, which is, which are two incredibly vital parts of, of our town government, the way it's structured, the way we're supposed to, to be legislators. So I know that I'm probably potentially nitpicking, but at the same time, it's, we need to take those pieces very, very seriously. So if anything, this is really more so about following due process and timing, which is challenging. I think that what we're feeling and hearing is some fear and some urgency. Whereas I'm sort of just challenging that maybe we step back and really, you know, go through the proper process. It's, I have a different opinion. That's simply that.
Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just with respect to the matter of evaluation, as we've noted, it was a year and a half ago that the current contract with Mr. Dutton was executed. And having been part of that process, as have a number of you at that time, I can tell you that a very vigorous discussion took place, taking into account every conceivable aspect of performance. So while it was not conducted by the review committee and specifically in accord with customary practice as to a formal evaluation process, we thoroughly vetted performance of the town manager as we re-entered that, as we then extended that contract a year and a half ago. So it was actually a very vigorous and very thorough process, notwithstanding that it was not in the form we have customarily followed. And it is the case, and we've also discussed this in recent weeks, the fact that throughout the past nine or 10 or thereabouts number of years, there had probably been, if I'm correct in the number, I, I think three evaluations that have been conducted. So it, it is a process that is not always, well, let's put it this way, it's sometimes observed in the breach rather than in compliance. But all of us are accustomed to working directly and frankly, quite personally, with the town manager. And in all of our dealings with the town manager, we each are in a position to, on a, on a week-by-week basis, evaluate his responsiveness, his attention to priorities of the council and of the citizens and his follow-through. And I think that in respect of those considerations, we, I think frankly, and I'm hearing this from a number of you, that we have been favorably impressed by performance issues throughout this period. And we've seen frankly, far greater responsiveness and transparency, I think, in the last couple of years than may have been the case previously. And in that respect, I think that credit is owed to the town manager for having heard that criticism and having seized it and responded to it very directly and very forthrightly. And I think that that's something that we should take into account. And this is as good an opportunity as any to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Counsel Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. A year and a half ago, when we did vote, the current contract the town manager is under, it was a fairly close vote amongst the councils at that time. It was a four to three vote. And I was one of those three votes that voted no. The other two members are no longer counselors anymore. But I had high hopes and great expectations at that time. And, and my hope at that time was when the current contract expires or we're coming up for renewal, that I could take a look at the past three years and say, you know, we have made progress. Things have gotten better. There is more vision. There's more things happening. And I could support a renewal of the contract. I wanted to be able to do that. I wanted to be able to do that so much. But in one year and three months into that contract, we're, we get together as a council and the issue really around an evaluation, which hasn't been done in two or three years. To me, I wish I had a fresh evaluation on the current town manager. That would help me to decide whether I want to go out to 2027. The salary is a separate issue. I wouldn't take an evaluation so much into the salary increase simply because we were presented and we were told that there are his counterparts in other towns that are in the $200,000 range. I know that. I see it. We all see that on the MMA website. So the salary is one thing. And I'm a little comfortable with, with that, although it's a little bit high. But if I can't make $210,000, somebody should, right? But anyway, so the evaluation, I wish I did have a fresh evaluation in front of us, but we don't. And I would be more comfortable saying, okay, yes, let's, that new evaluation, I think it probably would be a favorable one because I think there have been some improvements over the past couple of years. Then I'd feel more comfortable going out to 2027, but I'm not. As far as the salary increase goes, what was, the tone of what we were brought to, was brought to us was that there was another town that was advertising for a position around this range and, and that we needed to do something. And we did this. But what we are approving for the town manager tonight, if it's approved, is exactly what he asked for. There was no give and take. And that's not acting in the best interests of the taxpayers of this community. We should have negotiated and negotiated more because I believe there was some give and take on at least one of these areas. And the position that was in Falmouth actually settled at $195,000, not the $210,000.
Any other comments? Maybe if I could just add a few things. I think in general, the idea that salaries are increasing is real. Right? We can look at Mansfield, higher number. Falmouth for similar number. There are a few that are lower. I would also like to recognize the fact that in Bridgewater, we don't have a mayor. So some of those other towns have more of a paid leadership structure than an admin or a town administrator or a town manager is supporting. Here we have one person. They're the person that answers the call when anything happens. They're the person that runs everything you see in this town. We are setting direction. We are setting strategy. We're approving it. But there is one person that gets the call when real things happen here and it's not us. We, we get the call, the second call. So there's someone that's really running this town on a day-to-day basis. And I think we're, you know, we are seeing someone with that level of experience bringing a town to this level of investment and vision, earning the level of compensation that, that we see. So, so for me, the compensation fits the role. And I also believe that the town manager is executing against the things that are, that are priorities. It's important for me, you know, for us to finally invest in something in this town and say, we're going to really do it. And we're going to do it over a period of years. And we're going to put our money behind it and we're going to get it done. And for me, this is that. The other thing I would say is similar to Counselor Chase, although we are trying to get up to speed with the charter, I do think we need to recognize that we just went through a couple of crazy years. I joined the council fully remote when we were trying to figure out how to even have council meetings. So, so there's, there's a, it's not an excuse. But, but I do want to recognize the fact that we are sort of catching back up to real life right now and some of the things that need to execute now that COVID is over, we're starting to put those back in place. I do also agree that we do have and did have real discussions about performance for the town manager now. We're having some of this publicly. We say we didn't counter, but we did have a big discussion about it. And we did vote as a council on what we thought was fair to show our level of trust and investment in this vision. So although there's a lot of ways to say we didn't check the box, I would argue that we have more ways to say that we did. We had discussions about performance. We had discussions about term. We had discussions about every single financial detail in the contract. We went through and said before and after, what does it look like? We did that as a council for this conversation. And then we came forth with something that we thought was fair. And so I think that's what's before us. I, I support it. I support it as an investment in Bridgewater. I encourage others to support it too.
Should I just say one thing?
Yep.
I just do want to concur with Counselor Gallagher on the negotiation. Okay? I think it was kind of an opinion and not much of a negotiation. I think we are offering what was asked. Also, I just want to ask all of my fellow counselors if they got the same emails that I got from constituents before they take the vote.
Yep.
It's just a.
So I would say, I think as town council president, I did see maybe, you know, eight or so emails that were CC'd to the full council. I saw emails both for and against. And I think for the most part, to be honest, I saw incorrect information. There was correct information and valid opinions. I'm not discrediting that. But there's a lot of sort of churn around this specific topic. I think I saw one that said it was introduced by the, you know, the someone other than the town manager. And we just like took it and ran with it. That's not the case. This was introduced through a conversation with the town council president and the town manager. And we involved the assistant town manager to help us research it and learn more and ask her role as HR. So we saw some misinformation, I think, about that and other emails that, from my opinion, were valid. But, you know, but I, I think we're probably part of the story. So I think it is our responsibility after the vote to, to share that information out with the community and make sure they know why all of us voted how we did.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I would thank you all first before we take the vote for the lively discussion and appreciate all the perspectives on this.
Could have been worse. It wasn't being nice.
This is, this is a very important vote for us and all of us. Yeah, this is a, this is a very important vote for us and, uh, all of us as counselors recognize that and have put the diligence into the discussion to make sure that we're voting in the way that we think is best for Bridgewater. Uh, Dr. Perry?
I just wanted to, Mr. President, uh, I just wanted to make clear there was an appropriation made budgetarily. If we did make this move, that the money would be there to, to allow this to happen. I believe Mr. Gallagher brought it up in a prior meeting. I just wanted to put that out there to make sure people knew that, you know, the money is there to make this happen if this were to be voted through.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Okay. With that, we have a motion for approval. Did you have a roll call? Uh, yeah. Well, do I have a second or sorry? Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Um, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Six to three. Motion passes.
Thank you all. Uh, moving on to item B under legislation for action. We have the proposed ordinance D F Y 23 013 zoning ordinance amend article three, section 23A. Planning board, I'll defer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, this ordinance change, zoning ordinance change actually does two things. Less importantly, it, it clarifies the name of the alternate member as the alternate member and not the associate. Second, it, uh, allows this alternate member to actually sit on all matters coming before the planning board right now. The only matters that, uh, that the associate or the, uh, alternate, uh, can sit on, I believe are site plan reviews. So this would allow all matters coming before the planning board, uh, that the alternate, uh, member can sit on. So, uh, really mostly a technical correction, um, but certainly happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
I would like the second this time.
Please, let's, you have the second.
Let the record note that Council Robinson seconded. Do we have any discussion?
I will withdraw my motion and you can. Try to keep the wheels down.
All right. Uh, we do have discussion, Dr. Perry?
Yes. Uh, again, I just think this, I'm sorry.
It's a motion to refer to advertising.
Oh, uh, this is a motion.
Oh.
Don't vote on this? No.
I was just going to advertise.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
We have a.
All right, just going to.
First to advertising. Do we have a second to that motion?
So Council Robinson, when it comes back, you can actually.
What is advertising?
Oh, it's going to, just being posted in the newspaper.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right. A second. Uh, and then, uh, we have discussion.
We'll save the discussion until it comes up for a vote.
Uh, so with that, we'll do a voice vote. Again, this is a motion to refer to advertising. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes nine to zero. Uh, moving on to agenda item M, old business, uh, we have none. Moving on to, uh, agenda item N, new business. Uh, item A, ordinance D F Y 24 002 rat control and prevention ordinance. Uh, I introduced this, so, uh, maybe just a quick overview. We heard, uh, some comments, uh, today from residents of Bridgewater that are concerned about, uh, the spread and maybe proliferation of rats in Bridgewater. Uh, there are other instances we've seen in the town manager's report of, uh, other areas where rats could become a concern. The goal of this ordinance is to give us, uh, a vehicle to have conversations and enforce action in areas where that is, uh, becoming a neighborhood problem. And, uh, if you do some research on this, you know, there are significant safety concerns associated with the spread of rats. And there are actually, you know, ways of controlling that spread, uh, with some, uh, you know, kind of property diligence. Um, and so, uh, the goal of this is for us to introduce, uh, a vehicle to enforce, you know, sort of compliance with rat control standards. I would entertain a motion to refer to, uh, rules and procedures.
So move.
Second.
The motion in a second, any discussion? Okay. Uh, as the sponsor of it, maybe I'll just make a note. Uh, I think we heard some interesting, uh, comments today on language that might make this, um, you know, kind of, uh, aligned with our environmental goals as well. I would encourage rules and procedures to consider that. We can take a voice vote. All those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Uh, the motion to refer to rules and procedures passes nine to zero. The next item we have, item B, uh, resolution R F Y 24 001. A resolution to apply for, accept and expend a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conserv- Conservation Services, uh, local acquisition for natural diversity land, uh, grant program. I'll defer to the town manager for an overview.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, this, uh, resolution is essentially required by the Division of Conservation Services, uh, to be passed by the council, uh, in order for us to apply for, um, funding, uh, through the land grant program, land grant program, uh, funds for Bridgewater funds up to 66% uh, of a property purchase or a property conservation easement. In, uh, this case, it's a property purchase of, uh, two lots and you'll see the next, uh, transfer order, uh, references this, but it's a two lot. Purchase, uh, on Broad Street, which would add to the Styles and Hart, um, uh, Parkland property. And is, uh, will be incorporated into assuming, um, the council votes. The second, uh, art, uh, second, um, order here, uh, would, uh, would be used as part of the, uh, overall parks improvement program, probably to include parking, uh, and trailhead. And so, um, I essentially, it's a bit of a formality. As I say, that's required by, uh, DCS. But encourage the council to refer it and, uh, certainly then vote on it in August.
Thank you. Uh, I would entertain a motion to keep a council for a vote in our next schedule. So move.
Second.
Um, Mr. President, just point of information. Should this potentially go to budget and finance because it, it does speak about applying and receiving grants? Just asking. I don't think it would, I don't think it would hurt.
I, I withdraw with that. Okay. Uh, so we'll withdraw the motion and we'll entertain a motion to send to budget and finance and finance committee?
Yep. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we can do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes nine to zero. Uh, we'll send the budget and finance and finance. Okay. Um, item C, uh, order O F Y 24 008, transfer order, uh, Broad Street two lot property purchase. Uh, defer to the town manager for an update.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the second, essentially the second of two, um, related, uh, orders. This one's the actual transfers recommended by the community preservation committee. Um, they're recommending a transfer of $340,000 from their undesignated reserve, uh, for the purpose of purchasing, uh, by purchase or eminent domain or negotiated, uh, purchase otherwise, uh, two lots on Broad Street, just for the council's purposes. These two lots, um, are rectangular in size, uh, uh, equal in, in, uh, size as well, but they're just north of, um, the Chinese restaurant, uh, which is on Broad Street there. The pink building.
Imperial Kitchen.
Imperial Kitchen, thank you.
The old Pizza Hut.
That goes way back.
Right across from the Portuguese.
Yes. Nice. Okay. Uh, do we have any questions for the town manager?
Through you.
Yep.
Are we keeping the billboard there or is that?
No.
Torn down?
Uh, actually the billboard, uh, certainly if the, if the town, uh, actually comes to be owner, the billboard will be the first thing that comes down, but I do believe the property owners have actually taken the billboard down.
It's right at this point.
It's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't think it fell down. I think they removed it.
Wouldn't be surprised.
So.
It's gone.
But yeah, no, we would not, uh, the town certainly would not be running a billboard. Yeah.
Good question. Any additional questions for the town manager? Okay. I would entertain, uh, a motion to refer to budget and finance and finance committee.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Uh, we'll do a voice vote. All those, or actually any discussion? Nope. Uh, voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes nine to zero. Okay. Uh, moving on to item O, citizen comment. Do we have any citizens that care to comment?
On Austin Street, uh, thank you for the discussion tonight. I look forward to you managing the town manager more effectively. I have a request of the town manager. I had, there was a thread on one of the Facebook pages about the use of the charging stations out here. I notified a town manager and the chair of the, uh, president of the council. And I was told that there would be a policy put forward so that the people knew when they could or should or couldn't use those. I'm requesting that the town manager give a report on that at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens that wish to comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on, uh, to item P, council comments. Start with Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I would say that frankly, we concluded a very productive meeting this evening. And I think most importantly, I found that at every, as every opportunity, it was conducted very respectfully and with plenty of opportunity for both citizen and council input. Certainly the result of some of our action this evening is not going to be, uh, in certain quarters, well received. But we understood that at the outset. And I frankly think that we have served the town well by giving this matter, uh, ample consideration. And, um, frankly, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with the result. I think it's a very promising result and I'm, I'm glad that we've undertaken it in a very, um, considerate and respectful manner. And, uh, I appreciate everyone's, uh, input in that regard. And that is really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I just wanted to start by thanking the Fourth, uh, Fourth of July committee and, uh, the, the parade was a great experience to walk with all of you. It was nice to see all the town councilors present and walking. Uh, I know my son Cameron enjoyed it a lot, his first Fourth of July. He got to be in a parade. So that'll be a memory we can take, uh, and share with him as he gets older. So thank you to the committee. And, and luckily the weather held out, the fireworks were great as well too. So that was great. Um, I also just wanted to, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this and, and maybe I should have mentioned it earlier, but Counselor Chase highlighted sort of the excitement of, of where the town's headed. And I hear a lot from families and especially young families in Bridgewater who I talked to about this excitement. And I think that's something that you don't often see, especially nowadays as it comes to civic engagement, especially working in, in higher education, something that we're preaching constantly. But it's nice to see in Bridgewater and I think it, it should be recognized, the hard work that's happened, you know, previous to my election by counselors, town manager, uh, and so forth. And, and that's something that I'd love to see continue in Bridgewater. Uh, I'd love to see young families and young individuals continue to be involved and continue to be excited for this town. I think it goes a long way in terms of, of, of people looking at, you know, their next step or where to settle down long-term. And I think, you know, tonight's vote helped us create some stability in that and, and really, put Bridgewater on the map and continue to, to help build Bridgewater to attract young families and young individuals to be a part of this town. So, uh, I just wanted to mention that and, and point out the excitement and, and hopefully that will continue through. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Uh, Counsel George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to echo the earlier comments around Fourth of July. For the most part, the weather held up. For those that were dressed for the weather, did extremely well. Fireworks were great. I, I just, uh, just want to remind people that, um, it goes without saying, it's a small group. I think of six people that put in beyond yeoman's work. I would hope that today, quote unquote, uh, people start considering to continuously donate to the Fourth of July so that, um, you know, that group has a little bit of runway coming into the summer. Uh, instead of trying to come up with 50 grand in probably, was it two and a half, three months? So, you know, hopefully it can be a sustained thing for, for that as well as other things that are going on. But I would like to also echo, uh, my thanks to the entire July fourth committee, for putting on a great event. People came out, they, um, dealt with the weather. It was great to see everybody and, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Uh, Counsel Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yes, the, the Fourth of July, uh, committee, um, the small group that they are, did a fantastic job this year. Although it was a nail biter with funding right down to the end. They've made it very clear through their Facebook pages and, and certainly out in public that they're starting at pretty much ground zero right now. So it's never too early, uh, to donate to the Fourth of July committee for 2024. They are going to have a much challenging, uh, a time in, over these next 12 months or 11 months, uh, to prepare for the Fourth of July of 2024. So it's important that everybody get involved. Make a donation, support them in any way, but they did a fantastic job this year. And, you know, I've, I was, this was the first Fourth of July parade as a counselor that all of us were there, all nine of us were there. And I didn't have to hold the banner for the first time, I think. I'm moving up a little bit. So, but anyway, it was, it was a great day. The fireworks were great. The, the rain held, the rain ga- uh, let, let up around six o'clock. So the, the field was in great condition and I hope there wasn't too much damage done to it. But it was, it was a great night and great day in the town of Bridgewater. I also want to say that I'm, I'm also looking forward, at least until April, of working with the town manager and, and all the initiatives that are going on in this town. And perhaps another three years after that to get to 2027. But, um, and I also respect all my colleagues' comments, thoughts and everything, uh, that went into this decision tonight. And as I have always said, even though you're in the minority, you should support the majority. And, um, I'm sure I'll be questioned about, uh, why we voted yes or even why I voted no. But I think that the vote has been taken and we need to support the vote. And we need to support the town manager and his staff as they move forward on these many initiatives in this town over these next four years, whether I'm sitting here or not. So that's very, very important, uh, cause there is a lot going on. And there are a lot of young families have, that have, that's been mentioned that see, see the activities and see the enthusiasm in the town of what we have going on. We have a fire station ready to go. We have, you know, the common that needs to, needs to be addressed. We have the Broad Street blight that's been sitting there for years. We have, uh, a potential redevelopment of the campus plaza and hopefully the Perkins Foundry site can be developed as well. That's a lot. Uh, and obviously don't forget, South Street needs to be repaved at some point and other roads in, in the town. So there is a lot and, and, uh, I think the, the auditor, uh, pointed out that we have done a very good job over the last several years in, in building up our reserves and loo- and also increasing our, our bond rating. So I'm looking forward to these, at least until April and maybe three more years after that. If, if I want to run again, um, to help the town manager and support the initiatives in the community. So on that note, um, I also want to say, I know in that long-term plan, there's a, a dog park in there somewhere. But I got close to one on Saturday with Bark in the Park. So I brought my sister's dog Gracie down there and she had a good time for a couple hours in the heat. Mingling with other dogs, uh, in the town. So it was a nice, uh, little event for, for the community as well. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Uh, I pretty much echo literally everything everyone said. So thank you for that. And, and Dennis, I think that shows so much grace and I a hundred percent agree that even in the minority should support the majority. I think everyone heard from me, I was very particular around, you know, the process and what actually makes us a government here, which a lot of citizens have put a lot of work into and take very, very seriously. So that is why I elevate that because we just need to be accountable and know that we unilateral, well, not unilaterally, a majority decided to go against it to a certain degree. Now, I, I think that you did a very compelling argument. Now, I, I think that you did a very compelling argument. Anyway, with that aside, it's just a matter of like, I will always challenge this council, right? Like, that's just my nature in terms of, you know, holding ourselves accountable because it's not just to us individually. It's also to the people that we serve in this community in whole. So anyway, with that said though, I also would love to address Mr. Dutton that I know this is not the first time you've had your fate reviewed by nine people in public. So hats off for that resilience. It's a tough seat to be in. I know that you and I have had plenty of interactions in terms of me volunteering, but this is a very, very different new role. And I'm excited to continue to, to develop our new relationship. So congratulations and I am very, very much excited about things to come. Thank you.
Robinson, Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Just to continue the lauding of the Fourth of July Committee, they did a great job this year, not only in fundraising, but just in everything they put together. I mentioned in the past, I was a former president of the committee back in the turn of the millennium and I had a committee of at least a dozen people at the time. So what they're doing with five to six people in that committee is pretty amazing. So outside of continuing to support them, I would definitely, you know, reach out if you're interested in helping this committee on, I'm sure they could use a few more bodies. But again, they put on another great show and I just want to thank them all for their hard work and dedication. I know the president's been doing it for a number of years now, so I give her much props. I only did it for a couple, two, three. I want to just also thank the reappointments of Nathan Schofield, so Michael Farady and Michael McDonald to, to their different committees. It's always appreciative for their volunteerism and we certainly ask for more people to step forward for that. Just to expound upon, you know, the discussion that we had as a council, I too am very impressed with how we discussed it. The decorum, the, the opinions. I think we're, we're in a really good place as a council. I think we have a lot of good background, a lot of good different ways that the different counselors look at things. I think bringing all those different opinions and insights into discussions on topics like this, I think is important for us to go forward and make decisions. That's going to help push Bridgewater forward. So I just want to thank all my fellow counselors for their inputs and their discussion here tonight. I think it was great. I think Bridgewater is, is in good shape from top to bottom with leadership, with the council, with our departments, with our, our department heads. Just looking at surrounding towns and seeing some of the things that they're going through, we're not going through some of those things. So I think that's a testament to all the people working hard to have Bridgewater move and go forward in positive direction. So with that said, that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo what everyone said about the Fourth of July and also thank the team, people over at CERT and all our first responders who were there for the day and the night to make sure everything went smoothly. It's the first meeting since Summerfest and that was a great event, great fundraiser for Easter sales. And then as Dennis said, Bark in the Park was last Saturday. That was also good. Good to see a bunch of people's dogs together, no accidents or anything, you know? And then to you, Mike, if I was going off my emails, I probably would have voted no, but I went around, I talked to business owners, I talked to plenty of people in town and the majority of people think that you deserve this. So for the people that don't, you got five years to prove them wrong and I hope to be aboard with you the whole time. And on that, I wish you good luck because there is a lot on the table for this town right now. Now in my comments here, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McKinnon. Counselor Lindy?
I'm glad you saved the best for last with the council president going after me because there's not much to say at this point, other than to echo the thanks to the Fourth of July Committee and get people thinking about not winter, but probably a, a great event that happened last year, the winter, wonderful. And they're going to start looking for money to be raised so we can decorate the common again. There are younger families and middle-aged families and older families. And I spend a lot of time doing some volunteer work at the senior center and the library. And I think we can learn a lot from them. I think we're in an exciting time. Plus we have to remember the past and the history to, to mix in with it. Majority rules and we all should support the decision. I agree with that a hundred percent. I am a process person too, and I really believe that, you know, when I, when I have the chair of the charter committee coming here and giving us some facts and statistics, we should listen to that. We also should bring him in here, like we talked about a couple of meetings ago, so we can go over that stuff. So all that wonderful work that they did doesn't go out, out the window. I thought that auditor's presentation was very, very good and very factual to me as a newer counselor. I just would have loved to see it before the meeting because I didn't get that for whatever reason. And it makes me, you know, think about things and, and ask questions, you know? I think he explained it very well, but I just like to see all of that stuff. I took a lot of notes. I'm a note taker and I'd rather not. Michael, congratulations. I like working with you and it wasn't about you in terms of my vote. It was about process and it was about evaluations. I was a manager for two and a half years and I, all I know is I, I had a way to, to follow things and I just want us to do that going forward. I'd be anxious, do, do we all sit on that committee? It's hard to be judged by, we don't, okay?
Yeah.
The review?
The review committee is a smaller committee, but it takes input from all counselors.
Okay. So, yeah, I, we did that on my school committee and there were ten of us, so it was even more. But I, I just want, it, it's hard to have nine bosses. I've worked for boards, I'm probably going to say four or five different boards. And all you need to change is on that board to upset the whole apple cart and upset the whole balance. I agree with Dr. Perry that I think we're a, a good working group and I think we're poised to move forward into the future. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'll bring us home. I do also want to echo our thanks to the fourth committee, to the CERT volunteers and to all of the Bridgewater residents who showed up in the rain to watch a parade. I think it was one of the bigger turnouts I've seen and it was in the middle of a bad weather forecast and a downpour and everyone stood there and sort of cheered for each other. So I think when we think about like what Bridgewater is becoming and, you know, what I think we're all trying to create, you know, a bunch of people standing out in the rain to cheer on their community, I think is a, a pretty good visual of what we want to do. For us. And so thank you to the community for making it a community. And, and to the Fourth of July Committee for the, the fireworks. Can't even imagine what goes into that. I also want to thank the council for a great debate. And I think for those watching, you know, the reason this works is because people have different opinions and are willing to share them. And, and we can take different perspectives and kind of play off of each other and, and share ideas. And so I think when you see us sharing different ideas, that's, that's a sign of that it's working, that it's successful. And, and I appreciated all the comments tonight. I assure you, it is my intent to get alignment with the charter in places where we aren't. So, you know, I encourage the public and the council to recognize those spots and make sure we know about them so we can trust them. You know, I think maybe just lastly, I am truly excited about where Bridgewater is right now. I think when I joined, you know, my first day, I was given a stack of plans and they dated back decades probably. And, you know, this is what Bridgewater was going to be. And every time it's like, oh, we didn't do it, we didn't do it. I think because of the mix of counselors that we have now, the, the level of involvement from the community and the level of focus, I think, from the town manager, we are finally bringing all those plans together into something that will be executed. And I personally, you know, I live in the town, I'm excited to see it kind of reach its full potential. And I'm excited and, you know, I voted for that outcome. And so I'm encouraged and congratulate you, you, you know, Mr. Dutton on the extension. I think that is it. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. We will do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Motion passes. Thank you all. That's, yep, the counselors, we do have to.